That gives me the parent perspective as well as being a former teacher, as well as working together, like working together to bring agencies together on different projects in the past. But what really weighs on me at night is this, thinking of the students. More than one hundred and eighty seven thousand students have been affected by a school shooting since Columbine occurred back in nineteen ninety nine. And this student population of one hundred and eighty seven thousand is enough to be the entire population of Fort Lauderdale, Florida. So it's a large population of students in primary and high schools who have been directly impacted in their schools with a school shooting. So thinking of the faces of these students, thinking about how students in North Carolina are impacted by seeing this on the news, hearing about these incidents, and also about, you know, the annual school shooting drills that all schools have. And so, you know, you have children in elementary schools, you know, practicing what they would do if a shooter comes into their classroom. So I hear from a lot of principals, what should I say to the students to help reassure them? You know, that this is not, probably not going to happen at our school, but we need to practice just in case. And this really weighs heavily on me, and it's one of the things the center is working on right now. Some sort of things that we can give to parents and to schools in talking to students about their safety at school. We know that a student can be in the safest school in the world, but if they don't really feel secure, if they're impacted by trauma, impacted by mental health concerns, or any other fear, maybe even the basics of they haven't had a meal, they're not going to be able to learn at school or feel safe. So this is part of the reason why we have the whole child committee and talk about the wraparound services, and why we have the mental health initiatives that are going on within the department. The perspective of it is school shootings still are extremely rare. The student is much more likely to be involved in a shooting or around a shooting at their residence, at their street, in a public place. So while it is rare, we know that it can happen, and when it does happen, it's catastrophic. And so we have to expect the best, is one of my phrases, but prepare for the worst. We don't want schools to be, to look like this. This student is getting ready to walk into a school, and you've got, you've got the helicopter hovering over, you've got the shooter or the person on the roof protecting the school, you've got the guard dogs. You know, we don't want our student to wonder, you know, what's in there? You know, that the building has to be protected like this. But at the same time, we need to realize that certain physical security and emergency measures must be put in place. So just to give you a little background on the center before I get into the more, what you want, what we're doing today, and what some of these new schools' safety things might mean, some of the guiding principles that we operate on, based on our school safety tour that we did when the center first opened, we know and we heard from schools all across the state that they do value their school resource officer. They like having a trained law enforcement person in the school. And most of them said that they thought that that school resource officer needed certain kinds of training, and the school resource officers have told us, because we recently did our census, which you all will be receiving soon, asking school resource officers what sort of training would be helpful to them, what we can do to assist them. And so we're finding out specific kinds of training. It's funny, some of our SROs said, I want the students to get rid of their cell phones, too, we all want to have crisis intervention training. So great things we've been learning from our school resource officers. Today, they were talking about requiring certification and ongoing training for school resource officers. And I believe that's going to be one of the recommendations that comes out of the committee when it meets for the final time next week. We do believe that school safety requires agencies working together. Schools, even though, even as we improve our school support staff, which we should, I don't think there's going to be situations where we don't want the local mental health professionals for follow-up care and continuing care for our students who need it. We certainly need our law enforcement officers involved, providing the school resource officers and responding to the schools in case of an emergency. Juvenile justice, as you know, is very involved with the youth, increasingly so as we go into raising the juvenile age to nineteen by next year. And so all these agencies need to work together. Emergency management plays a key role in what we do because they do all the school risk and response management system in the schools. So we have to work together, and the local education agencies like to see people working together at the state level, really encourages them to be able to do so on the local level. And we all know that our students see things every day that concerns them, and they would like to be able to give this information to somebody at the school. Sometimes they don't know who to give it to. Sometimes they're afraid their life might be at risk, or they might be beaten up if they provide information to someone at the school and are seen doing so. So we really are looking for different ways to get better communication going between students and school personnel. So these are kind of the things we've been working on the past few years, and hopefully some of this legislation will assist us in doing these things. So we decided a three-pronged approach to school safety, and this is what we presented to the House Select Committee at the first meeting. Said, you know, you have to look at the physical security and emergency preparedness, certainly, but also mental health, and the students with special needs, and the school climate and discipline areas. So let me see if this works. Okay, so under physical security and emergency preparedness, some of the things the center does is critical incident response training for school faculty and staff, what to do in a multi-hazard event at the school, you know, like a flood, like a tornado, and certainly a school shooting. The school resource officer training is something that we work on. We work closely with the North Carolina Justice Academy, who trains a lot of the school resource officers in the state. And we've made recommendations for some updates in the curriculum, and they also sit on our task force for Safer Schools, so we work together that way, too. We're piloting crisis intervention training for youth, and crisis intervention training is what law enforcement officers get to learn to de-escalate when faced with somebody who's having a mental health issue, substance use issue. And we are piloting a youth version, it's a youth add-on course that's an eight-hour add-on focusing just on how youth present in crisis situations, and how the school resource officer or law enforcement officer can work with that student to de-escalate, and before things get out of control, the student gets even more upset. The school risk and response management system is what we work on with emergency management, where we digitalized all the school maps, and schools have loaded their emergency information web-based instead of the black boxes that have been around, I believe, since the nineties. All that same information digitalized and being brought up into the current century. So emergency management has done that for us. In the area of mental health, we do like the mental health first aid training for youth. It's an eight-hour training, so a lot of schools say that's a lot, a lot of training, you know, on one subject area to fit into our continuing education. And it can be divided up into two days, but I know the school mental health committee and the superintendent's mental health committee are all working on other kinds of training in that area that might be more practical. But we do like the mental health first aid youth because it's kind of for laypeople who just need to know what are the warning signs to look for, and when you see them, you take it to somebody at the school, and you know who to go to for it. School-based mental health, I still think we need those relationships with the local providers who have the real expertise in this area, have the psychologist trained to deal with these things, and we really like, some of them have offices in the schools even, and relationships where the providers come into the schools and are more readily available. We came up with a toolkit for how schools can deal with a student presenting with suicidal ideations. And this toolkit kind of gives a process that can also be used for a threat assessment when we get ready to deal with that. The last area, bullying prevention and cyberbullying, is probably one of the overriding concerns for school safety because of the way bullying can escalate and turn into violence, if not addressed at the early level. Anonymous reporting for students, the Speak Up application, I'll tell you a little bit more about that later. Student tutoring and mentoring programs, something that the House Committee is talking about, and talking about providing many grants to schools to start student mentoring programs. In the area of school climate, this is my favorite bullying slide because it shows how it begins and where it can go if you don't address it at the early level. So a lot of the school shootings that have occurred, they talk about bullying, going back to threats between students, fighting, trash talk, and put-downs between students, maybe over a girl or a boy, and how it escalated. So we need to start early and begin here with it, and have support from school administrators, for the teachers who see these in the classroom, to be able to get some support from the administrative level if needed to stop the bullying that might be going on in the classroom. So why do kids not want to report bullying or other things? Well, one of the big reasons they don't want to worry their parents, they don't have confidence that it's going to change if they report something. One of the things we did with the anonymous reporting application, when the school receives the tip about a school safety concern, they have to go into the system and say they're investigating, there's some action has been taken, and the student can go back in and see that something is beginning to happen, and then hopefully they'll see later improvements at the school. Sometimes students think involving the parent or the teacher's going to make the situation worse. We've seen situations where the parent has marched the student into the school to say, I want you to tell the principal about the drugs, and who's been, has the drugs at the school. Well, and in one of the situations that we've dealt with, this student was then attacked in the classroom by students that were in the gang with the students that he reported on. And the student had to be, after receiving a concussion, having to go to the hospital, the student had to be moved to another school. They don't want to be thought of as a snitch. Boys, it seems like particularly, they have that team thing going on where, I don't want to tell them my teammate, I don't want to tell them my brother, and really have to tell them, you know, this may be helping somebody. You're not, you're not hailing on somebody to get them in trouble, you may be trying to get help for a person. So we did have legislation back in 2013 that each local school administrative unit is encouraged to develop and operate an anonymous tip line. A lot of schools have gone on to develop things on their own. Most of them that we've heard about are not truly anonymous. You know, they just may send an email message, or even the Crime Stoppers, we've heard from students that Crime Stoppers, they know their voice will be left on the phone, and they feel like they could be identified through their voice. So we had to show them through the Speak Up app how when their information came in, it was totally anonymous, and we can even, we were even showing them, you know, on the tool. So we piloted, you know, an application that we called Speak Up NC, and there were almost three thousand downloads, you know, over the year, year and a half that it was piloted. And we did receive information that we felt like was helpful and in some situations, critical to receive. We invited, we engaged students and involved students in a lot of our activities at the Center for Safer Schools. We still do a presentation to the Governor's Pages almost every week, and we involve some of those students in some of our other initiatives. Our student engagement group actually helped us name Speak Up NC and come up with hashtags and the logo for it, and met three or four times a year. This is, I really love this one, this is some students debating. Half of the group was debating why you should have an anonymous reporting. The other group was debating why you shouldn't. And the biggest reason they came up with was too much work for the schools, having to follow up on all those tips. So that was, that was a concern that some schools have. Superintendent Johnson came to our task force meeting, and two of our student task force members on the Safer Schools Task Force spoke to the House Select Committee, had very different perspectives. The student on the left talked about the student walkouts, which had been going on across the state, and her school down in Sampson County developed a program, or they called it Walk Up, Not Out. And the students support one another, and they wrote, they had like a remembrance for the students who died at Columbine. And then the student on the right was more about the school resource officers. She felt like there needed to be more, they needed to be at all the doorways into the school. So we need to hear from the students, we're going to hear different perspectives. You may hear what you don't want to hear, but we still need to hear it. So this is what the anonymous reporting app looks like. It has six different reporting categories: bullying, drugs, underage drinking, weapons and fighting. The report was kind of our generic category for, student didn't know where it fit, or it was something that wasn't in one of the other categories. They were able to videotape it, take pictures, and if there was a real emergency, they could do their location, and we could provide emergency support to them in some situations. It's also a web-based tool because we wanted to think about those students who might not have a cellphone. And it was downloadable in some of our pilot canals on iPads and MacBooks. And so when the students were trained at the beginning of the year on how to use those, they were trained on how to send in the Speak Up tips. The kind of data that we received from Speak Up, as you can see, the largest amount were the bullying tips, drugs. We had some pictures of the drug deals going on in campus, and those pictures were given to local law enforcement, and there were some arrests made. Some of the interesting things we received that we weren't expecting were inappropriate relationships between students and teachers, or in some cases, coaches at the school. And one of the tips we received, like a page long, on the coach who was having a relationship with a sixteen-year-old student at the school. And later, the tips that were sent in were part of the law enforcement investigation, and the student was, the teacher slash coach was arrested, part in part the corroborating evidence from the tool. Self-harm games, we heard a lot about self-harm games and suicide tips. I'm concerned about my fellow student, they're very depressed, their behaviors changed, say they might kill themselves, I don't know what to do. So we made part of the Speak Up tip is they could directly call the suicide lifeline and talk to a mental health professional in cases of suicide because we wanted immediate mental health response for those. And we already talked about youth mental health first aid, but training for school staff from the level of school bus drivers, janitors, cafeteria workers, really everyone at the school has, needs to have some sort of basic training on what some of the warning signs might be to diagnose, with just, okay, these are some signs, and I need to let somebody at the school know so they can get help for that student. The threat assessment process, we were hoping that when the tips came into the school, they would form somewhat of a threat assessment team to address the tips. And now, some of the new legislation talks about threat assessment teams at schools. And we would use kind of this protocol where the students identified, assessed, connected, and always followed up with. These are some of the recommendations that have come out of, that really came out from different advocacy groups, including some of them from the center and the task force on Safer Schools, and what the mental health committee is looking at. Actually, these were their final recommendations. Increasing the school support staff ratios, requiring mental health training, same thing, peer-to-peer support programs, anonymous reporting, measures for the community mental health collaborations with schools, and the threat assessment teams. And then the physical security committee that met this morning has also came up with some recommendations, but before I show you those, what the Center for Safer Schools does is the critical incident training. And we are updating our training right now to include the reunification piece of if a school shooting were occur, or to occur, or a bomb threat, or some need to evacuate the building, the reunification process for students, parents to be able to come pick up their students, and for the school to evacuate to a new site. And we're working at that from a school administrator, law enforcement perspective, where we have two of our staff who have expertise in each of those areas working together to train the schools. Our training on critical incident response, we encourage staff to think about a critical incident in different ways. You know, are you going to be out on the playground? And most school shootings occur, like during class changes before school, in the cafeteria, times when they're not neat and orderly in their classrooms. So when we go, when we go out and encourage the training, we encourage school staff to go out to the class that's out on the playground and say, okay, if a shooter, shooter's right over there, what are you going to do? And, or a shooter's in the school, what are you going to do? Well, you're not going to go back in the school where the shooter is. You're probably going to go out into the woods. So we really want staff to start thinking critically, and even about the football games that might be happening at the high school. What are you going to do in those situations? And like I said, the training on a critical incident response, it's, first of all, it's a school planning and law enforcement partnership. So the schools plan it, the schools carry out the drills. But in the case of an active shooter, the response becomes a law enforcement response. If there's a shooter in the school, law enforcement's going to come in, and the school has to step back and let law enforcement take charge, and it becomes their response, and the school is secondary. But then, when, as the school is evacuated, reunification occurs, the school has to pick up again, and that becomes the school response in getting those students, you know, safely into a location, maybe providing them with food, and getting the parents to pick them up becomes a school response again. So it's kind of the need for law enforcement and school staff to work together. Like I said, we just did our updated census of school resource officers, and learned a lot about the kind of training that they would like to receive. Looking forward to providing this document to you all, not this one, but it will be 2018, this was our first one, to y'all hopefully by your next board meeting. The committee that met this morning is talking about expanding school resource officer grants. We recently put out a grant reapplication process, and we got a lot more requests than we had money in hand. And so this would be a way to be able to give the LEAs who requested money more of what they asked for. And so this is going to be coming before you all, I believe, at your June meeting to review our recommendations for the applicants, for the, it's about two hundred and ten positions that are currently funded, and it's the state-local match situation. And we're going to bring our recommendations to you at the next meeting and look to you for how you might recommend we handle those schools who may not get fully what they requested. And then we have the hope of new money coming in from the legislature as part of the recommendations that will be coming to the short session. Training school resource officers is a big topic by everyone. I mean, all branches of government, I believe, are concerned about this because there is no mandated required training. I mean, most law enforcement agencies, where the SRO comes from, requires it internally, requires certain things just for their agency. But it differs from LEA to LEA, and so we really want to come up with some required training programs, not just for the brand-new SROs, but also on a continuing basis so they can get updated training each year. The school faculty safety assessments, the school risk and response management plan that's uploaded now by emergency management does not include an assessment of the physical building. So we're looking at the old assessments that DPI has used in the past and seeing if they need to be updated, but schools are now asking for those assessment instruments so they can get COPS grants and other kinds of grants, or just good practice to go ahead and do an assessment. There was talk about schools, charter schools, who did apply for, a lot of them applied for the school resource officer grants in this cycle. They are only recommended to do annual lockdown drills and other safety procedures. So some of the talk was making that a requirement. Establishing a system of accountability for completion of the school safety tasks. We don't know what that's going to look like, we can use y'all's expertise for that, but we are unable to say which school has had, has held their lockdown drill, you know, which school has a school resource officer. So we're trying to find a way to keep better records of that. I think that's it, and I know Cecilia Hooks is going to give y'all, Cecilia Holden, sorry, going to give y'all a legislative update tomorrow. Much more detail than what I gave you legislative things. And that's all I have right now.
Right, we have just a couple of minutes left, if someone has a comment or a question or a follow-up.
I have a question, Swolli. With regard to the SRO coming out of local law enforcement, is it usually a sheriff's office or local city police, and is that an assigned? Or would the individual apply for that position?
I think most of them- Um, I think most of them do come from the local sheriff's office, although some do come from the chief of the police office. Um, but they, it's pretty much up to the law enforcement office to decide which SRO to send to the school. And we've been working, you know, over the years to say, you know, please make this be a position, somebody who wants to go work in a school, somebody who has the affinity to do that. Um, instead of just assigning somebody, uh, maybe because they want them to take a turn, maybe they've been on the street for a while and now they wanna give them a different assignment. But we would really like it um, to be more of a, the resource officer, you know, maybe has some um, some abilities to work with, with children. They have a desire to work in a school setting than just kind of an assignment by the law enforcement agency.
That's a good point.
Yeah, just.
Mr. McDevitt.
Uh, Kim, I like the way you've got this structured in, in the report. This is a, this is a good, I, I just feel like though that the the table and the responsibilities are much larger than this table and this board. And it, I hope that we're take, we're having this an overall comprehensive approach. And you know, whether it's policy or law or culture appropriations, I personally hope that I never reached the point, I found myself finding going down the, the aisle at a, at an airport and see on the screen over here a shooting and kinda say, well, there's another one. My gosh, we don't, we don't need to get there. I, I hope culturally we never get to the point where we're saying, where we're taking that, that kinda thing. This ought to be given. I mean, it's like when you buy a car, you shouldn't have to crawl under it to see if the transmission is under there or open, even open the hood and see if there's an engine. That should be given. And I just hope that, you know, it just, it's a much more comprehensive thing. In my mind, I've, and you've touched on some of those, but we've got to have this conversation around violence and the acceptance of violence and what, you know, and the conversations around video games and other kinds of things and that's, that's above my pay scale, but uh, we ought to have the conversations about how violence is i- and all of those things are affecting the larger thing. The second thing for me is you've touched on it in many ways is the mental health piece, the treatment, the drugs. We can't keep backing, that's resources and we can't keep backing away uh, from Medicaid funding and other things and we're talking about an opioid epidemic. And uh, so all of that kinda fits in this, in this uh, conversation. Uh, schools, you've touched on it very well. I wonder if we shouldn't, uh, you know, not, not require that you do it, but I would want an, I'd want a safety audit. I'd want some professionals to come in and look at my school and say, here, here are some things you could do to improve. I hope we're doing some of that and I mean, people who know what to recommend, but the audits and and use of technology, design of buildings, perhaps we ought to have the engineers and architects at the table saying, with safety people, security people henceforth saying, from now on, when you build a school building in North Carolina, here are some standards that you ought to consider relative to safety and design of this building. Whether it's ingress, egress, all of those things and you've touched on the bullying and the the cyber bullet, bullying and, and even the culture of ratting, quoting, ratting on folks, but the, the culture of, there also ought to be a, a culture of forgiving if you make a mistake. You know, uh, if you, if you say, hey, I thought, I think that guy was, I mean, and he's, and I was wrong. And you know, I'm sorry, but I made a mistake, but there ought to be a culture of that, that forgiveness. And then finally, I, I, I wish that we could have a, a serious, adult, mature, non-threatening conversation about guns. Uh, I, I don't, I don't have the answers. I know how I grew up, you know? I know that I had a thirty thirty to go deer hunting, I knew I had a twenty two to go squirrel hunting. I never got to kill a squirrel, I never could hit that thing, but. So I, I'm not, I'm not talking about having somewhere where we're trying to take people's guns. Uh, but we've got to have a mature, adult conversation that addresses all of the things around age restrictions and background checks and registration and buybacks and waiting periods and, and assault weapons and, and weapons in the hands of the mentally ill and even those who are on no fly lists. You know, all those are a conversation that I hope that we can have and I don't think that all the others, I don't think any of those are exclusive of the other pieces. But it just seems that we're, we're almost reluctant to have that uncomfortable conversation that we've, that we can't. And so I hope, and I, and again, I think that conversation is much larger than this table. I don't think it's the responsibility here to convene it. I just believe we've got to have that conversation uh, in this state to the degree that it shouldn't be beyond uh, uh, this state even to this country. So uh, that's my comment, I do have one other question, one question. Uh, a number of our schools are getting these false alarms and are dealing with them in a, almost daily, some, some systems daily. Uh, you can't ignore it. Uh, but there, it's, it's become, it's become quite frankly epidemic in some LEAs. Uh, particularly in the far ma- far west mountains, they've had some. Uh, are we giving any counsel, is there anything we can help them with there? Is there? I mean, I, it's a local thing and it's, uh, you know, they're bringing in the police department, the sheriff department, they're bringing everybody to the table, it appears. But boy, it's daily.
Yeah, some might say that increasing the penalties, I mean, but um, that's putting, you know, more, that's putting more arrests and um, harsher penalties on students. Um, but I think sharing with students that there are penalties for doing these sorts of false threats and there was a presentation from a district attorney this morning recommending all sorts of um, legislative statute, statutory updates on increasing penalties for, for making threats, false threats, et cetera. Um, but if the, you know, but that's, you know, just further perpetuates, you know, is that really gonna help the student be able to come back to the school and um, you know, perform differently and get the support that they need?
Thank you for what you're doing.
Any other questions? Mr. Duncan.
Um, three quick points, thank you, Kim, for lifting up mental health issues, it's so, it's so important to this process. We um, in our county have found that even if we go through the proper steps, you've actually identified someone who is in crisis. Trying to get a mental health worker or professional to see that person can be an enormous task and sometimes not even possible. So with the lack of availability of that resource, it makes the problem particularly attenuated. So thank you for lifting that up, I think it's terribly important that we do that. An SRO contract's just to illustrate um, what the differences can be. In our county, there's three different contracts. There's one with the Greensboro Police Department, one with the High Point Police Department, one with Guilford County Sheriff's Office. Contracts are different, the prices are different and the law enforcement um, approaches are not identical either. We've worked hard to try to bring that together, but it just, again, illustrates there's not a uniformity even in one county, never mind across the state in terms of those issues. And the last thing on the building security issues, just to lift that up a little bit. I mean, I do think a significant conversation's needed there and by way of example, most building inspectors, inspections will cause you in an elementary school to have an ingress egress point in every classroom. And every security expert you call in will say you're out of your mind to have an ingress egress uh, point in every classroom. And so there's good reasons for both. I mean, there's, there're thoughtful, safety oriented reasons for both, but it illustrates the difficulty of the issue and of course, most of our schools are not built today or yesterday, they're fifty years old or more. Some of them are in campus type settings and so there's a very complicated set of issues in terms of trying to best secure the safety and as that cartoon well put it, we don't want our students come into a place that looks like an armed fortress because that's not the kind of environment that inspires learning, so there's a.
A balance.
Yes, you've addressed the, the difficult issues you're facing well with the balance that we all need to think through.
Ms. White.
Um, great presentation. It occurs to me, I love the slide where you say school faculty and staff have to start thinking critically and tactically. And um, particularly what caught my attention is the tactical approach. To Mr. Duncan's point, um, SROs from multiple agencies and many schools that do not yet have SROs. We cannot rely on one person in a school setting where there perhaps are um, hundreds of students and um, faculty. One person cannot get the job done and that's something that's missing from this discussion is what happens and where is the training for what happens on a campus once an incident does occur? And I'm not talking about a lockdown drill, I'm talking about bringing together um, SROs or, or public safety officials that would work with individual schools based on their environment that if something does happen on that campus, that a group of individuals would be prepared to act in a responsive manner that would keep um, as many students safe as possible, all of them. Um, and that that planning happens on the back end of the conversation. Um, a lot of times, oh my goodness, we should have, what if we could have, why didn't we? Um, that that's equally as important as the pre-planning. And then my second response is what are our um, our higher education agencies doing um, with the mental health piece? Um, and the, and, and not waiting to train teachers once they get in the classroom about what to look for? But that that should be a part of their preparedness before they're ever licensed um, to teach.
If they're saying one in five students at the school will have a mental health issue treated or untreated and so that, that's significant.
Well, one thing I wanna point out, we heard in our whole child presentation earlier today, we heard students say, or we saw their quotes that said, somebody helped me learn to deal with my anger, someone helped me learn what to do when I was sad. You know, we can't, and I think there's been a lot of conversation, we can't deal with this in a vacuum. Uh, there are lots of things that go on and, you know, I'm not gonna reiterate my gun discussion that I did two months ago because y'all ne- heard me then, but you know, it has to be part of the conversation. All of these things have to be part of it. Um, we have, I think Dr. Matthews wanted to say something and yes.
And Mr. Coltrane.
I got Mr. Coltrane.
Thank you, Kim, good job. Two things to your question, Ms. White, about having that uh, multidisciplinary group convene prior to a shooting. We have that, we recommend that they do that. We recommend that each school do an event where they have law enforcement fire everybody in the community that would have anything to do with it upfront. So we do have that out there. To your question, uh, Mr. McDevitt, about uh, the structures and Mr. Duncan alluded to it momentarily there. For over twenty years, we have made recommendations on how to build the buildings safer. Target hardening, we've gone through, we did that twenty years ago. We re-up, we updated the training for that just prior to the Connecticut shooting and then after it, we took the stuff we learned from that and added it into our s- uh, school planning stuff for new construction. New construction and renovation, to Mr. Duncan's point, there's a whole lot of old stuff out there. Uh, and some of that is, is problematic, but that's another thing the general assembly's looking at in this uh, select committee is some type of grant potentially to deal with some of these issues in the older buildings.
I, I, you said that we, we provided the recommendations and so I guess we're not talking about standards at this point or uh, it's uh, because those often get uh, bid as bid alternates. And when the bid comes in and, and the, the base bid is too high, then all the alternates go away and and I, I make that point because just recently in a, in a, I'm gonna say a ten or twelve year old building, I counted probably twenty or thirty entrances.
Mm, oh sure.
Uh, at least and uh, no, you know, no fencing or anything like that. And again, I don't know that it was needed, I just know that I want the checklist that said, here are things y'all to look at.
Well, we're gonna do that, we're gonna, we, we have vulnerability assessments tools out there right now and we're gonna strengthen those and put them, put them back out again, so uh, they're out there. And to your point about standards, the general assembly took away the standards in nineteen ninety-five and any of this stuff related to building is a recommendation. But the good news is at least we review the plans that everything that is built on school, school ground and we make recommendations that, oh, by the way, this is what you should be doing to make it safe. Now what the local board of education does, I mean, whatever their economic situation is, you know, that's up to them to determine how to follow it.
And by the way, I went to school on an island in the middle of the river. And so it was pretty easy to secure uh, who came in off the island. It was out there in the middle of the French Broad River.
Uh, yeah.
I thought it was Albus.
Uh, Mr. Coltrane, I think would like to maybe give us a couple of comments about Governor Cooper's proposals.
Yes, I, I, I first just wanted to say I applaud the, the center and, and Kim, your um, focus on an interagency approach because we know it's not just a law enforcement issue, it's not just an education issue. It's not just a mental health issue, it's all of the above. And so I think really pulling the resources together that are available at the state and local levels is important. And um, Governor Cooper, two weeks ago, um, unveiled his uh, school safety package for his budget proposal, which will be in, uh, released later this month. Um, and he took that same interagency approach, uh, funding to help LEAs um, as well as community colleges and universities with security upgrades, uh, panic alarms, video cameras, uh, door locks. But also helping um, our school districts um, with getting more of the student support services that are necessary. So social workers, counselors, psychologists, nurses uh, into our buildings. But allowing our school districts to pick what they feel is the resource that they need. But also helping to support some of the, the training that Ms. Martin pointed out, the mental health first aid, community resilience model. What LEAs are doing uh, in their districts to help with some of the mental health concerns and helping to provide additional funding to help bolster that. As well as some funding for SROs.
Uh, can I ask a question there? Is that money flexible? Is the?
I'm sorry?
Is the, the flexibility of that money, uh, is that money uh, flexible?
So the, for the student support services, it would be, so it would be a, um, sort of an allotment that would allow them to, to pick what, if they want to, to hire more nurses or psychologists, so that money would be flexible. The other pots are for SROs or for the, the grants for helping um, with the, the models that are out there and that'll help first aid and those types of things, so.
I know we need to wrap this up, but I, I do wanna say that, and you touched on it, um, Mr. Coltrane, that you know, this, these safety issues are things that don't just happen, it's, they say current concerns are not just concerns for our school buildings. They're for movie theaters and the grocery store and the shopping mall and all kinds of places, which is. Why I think. Yeah, why I think we've got to have a broad discussion about it, but I appreciate that we're being proactive where we can be and that we have, um, there are, there are at least three committees and again, I, I would ask the superintendent to let us know about the health committee, the safety committee from the general assembly and along with our Center for Safe Schools. There are a lot of people doing this work and I hope they're not all driving really fast in one lane by themselves. I hope they're carpooling because we need people to work together on this if we're gonna solve this very complex issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Willoughby, thank you, Ms. Martin, thank everybody for contributing. This is certainly an important and timely topic that we're dealing with and we do want all of our schools to be as safe as possible and uh, to prevent these tragedies from happening or a tragedy for happening in our state. So Dr. Petrie Martin, I call on you to close out this day with the updates on the board's strategic plan and then uh, follow up on the recap and next steps, okay?
So good afternoon to everyone. And in full transparency, I have picked up uh, Dr. Lou Fabrizio's work on the strategic plan and certainly I hope that I am uh, doing it in justice at this point. So bear with me as we go through uh, what the staff has put together for you. Know that we're not asking you to approve um, the goals and objectives and metrics just yet. We do feel that based on the Ernst &amp; Young report and much of the information that you have heard over the last two days, we may want to consider deleting or adding some. we may want to consider deleting or adding some additional metrics and objectives. So, what you have posted on the site includes the PowerPoint presentation that I will be reviewing with you. But then to accompany the PowerPoint presentation, we have about a twenty-two-page document that actually speaks to all of the metrics that I will be referring to. But I will not be going through the twenty-two-page document today. We will ask you to certainly take that with you, do some reading, and continue to think about how we move forward based on all the information that we have heard over the last two days. So, we know over the last two days, we have heard information about supporting low-performing schools. We've talked about professional learning for educators. We have talked about hold child NC, which is currently in its pilot form, but certainly we hope to expand across the state. You have heard about NC check-ins as a tool to improve academic performance. And of course, we have heard a lot about school safety. So, those are very concrete things that we've talked about that lend themselves to some of the metrics that you will see discussed. Originally, we had five goals in our state board strategic plan. We have added a sixth goal. We know that we have to continue to work on the wording for that particular goal. But this speaks to the equity of educational opportunity for all students. We started this work back in November at the last planning meeting with the definition of what we mean by equity. And you will see, as we get to the objectives for Goal Six, how we have addressed that in the metrics. So, let's start with Goal One. Goal One has been in your plan for quite some time. It has the largest number of objectives. There are six different objectives listed under Goal One that all relate to ensuring we have graduates from high school prepared for work, further education, and citizenship. Here, you will see goals of increasing the graduation rate, ensuring that graduating students are prepared for post-secondary education. We see the beginning of our work around career in technical education. We hope to reduce the percentage of students needing remediation when they head to the community college or to the UNC system. Of course, this is where you see the end-of-grade, end-of-course assessments, and increasing in those assessments, and then increasing student performance on the national assessments, which in our case specifically would be the NAEP assessment. So, for Goal One, when you look at our metrics, we're looking at the ACT, Advanced Placement, the SAT, work keys, diploma endorsements, global language endorsements, end-of-grade, and end-of-course tests are all included in the data points that we're looking for in Goal One. For Goal Two, which has four objectives, this is where we begin to dig into personalized education. Here, we talk about the fact that we want to increase the number of students who graduate with a post-secondary credit. So, our metric here are students who receive college credit while in high school. Increasing the number of students who have access to online courses. This is where we take a look at our NCVPS course enrollment. Also, we're looking at increasing the number of schools designated as STEM, or Global Education Ready, schools. And this is also where we have charter schools listed, where we look at their school performance grades, their growth, their financial and operational management of the school, and also whether or not they are low performing. We're continuing to look at metrics for Goal Two that include the number of associate degrees that students receive when they graduate from high school. We look at advanced placement. We also are including the teacher working condition survey data here as well to look at information regarding how teachers see students using online courses. So, those are some of the metrics that we hope to use to get, sorry, at this Goal Two. Goal Three, every student, every day, has an excellent educator. I would say this is where we've had significant changes in the metrics that we are collecting. We have four objectives listed here. Of course, the EVA's data is an important metrics. Under this particular goal, we're looking at teacher effectiveness. We're looking at the number of teachers in need of improvement. We're also using the teacher working condition survey data as part of the data for some of these metrics. We're also using surveys that we collect from educators across the state as well. And the last objective, which is posted here, really came from our ESSA work, where they are asking us to look at equity, looking at high-performing teachers in the neediest schools and for our neediest students. So, that is Goal Number Three. Goal Number Four certainly is very much on the operational side of the work of DPI. Every school district has an up-to-date financial, business, and technology system to serve its students, parents, and educators. We have only three objectives for this goal. And here, we're certainly looking at our digital learning media inventory data regarding whether or not we have wireless coverage in our schools. We're also looking at the usage for things like the parent portal and home base, the usage for learning management systems across the state, as well as school net. And then that third objective really has to do with salary audit exceptions. This is really important, that our schools are managing their funding wisely and well. So, that is another measure we have for Goal Number Four. Then for Goal Number Five, every student is healthy, safe, and responsible. We have four objectives here, making sure that our schools are safe and respectable school environment. So, we're looking at things like MTSS here as a data point. We're looking at our YRBS data also for several of these data points. We're looking at the number of minutes of physical activity in our schools as reported by our schools. We're looking at the number of schools in our school breakfast programs across the state of North Carolina. We have added a new metric here, chronic absenteeism. We started talking about that last November. We're adding it to the state board metrics as well. And of course, as always, we continue to monitor dropout, suspensions, specifically out-of-school suspensions, crime in schools, and violence in schools. So, we'll continue to keep those metrics for Goal Number Five. And then the last goal, which is the newest goal we've added to the state board plan, Goal Six, which is to ensure equity of educational opportunity for all students. We have four objectives here, of course. The first one is always to decrease the number of low-performing schools and districts in the state. You heard a lot of information yesterday about how we hope to make that happen. And then also increasing the percentage of students proficient in reading by the end of third grade. And again, looking at subgroups. This entire goal is really about us looking at subgroups and documenting them in our state board metrics, which we have not done before. And this all comes out of our equity work. This is also documented in our ESA plan as well. And so it's critically important we maintain that particular goal. So, as I said, I was not going to go through all twenty-two pages, but that includes all of the six proposed goals, as well as the objectives. And then you can take a look at the twenty-two-page document that tells you the different metrics that we are proposing. At the end of the day, we know our work certainly has to become more focused, and we have to become clear on how we do our work, but these are metrics that have to be addressed. And so we feel confident what we've brought to you, but we know there could be room for improvement. So, I will pause here and ask if there are any questions or comments, and then you can take another month to take a look at these documents.
Just a quick question, this is, you presented that in a very organized, clear way. I appreciate that. My question has to do with the Goal Number Five. You were talking about the metrics, every student is healthy, safe, and responsible. I wonder if the TWC would have any implications as a body of data that would lead to a metric? I mean, just something to consider.
And this is the type of feedback we definitely need.
Right, and then another, one that resonates equity to me is the under Goal Three. The last objective, increase access to effective, on and on and on. And down at the bottom, it mentions lower poverty peers. It could be where exactly needs to be, but it also resonates equity. Just something to think about.
Funny you should mention that, when we've, we thought about keeping it there, then we've thought about moving it to Goal Six as well, so that's why we definitely need your feedback.
It's probably okay where it is, it just resonates equity. Thank you.
Since I might not be here next time if they confirm my replacement, I've got to put in my last plug here. Goal Number Six, equity, we've had a lot of conversation over the last few months about it. And I tried to quickly look at the twenty-two-page document, but, you know, I'd like someplace there where we want to increase, ensure equity of educational opportunity for all students. I'd love, even though I know we have less control over it maybe, I'd love something there that shows what we're doing for those particularly at-risk preschool children, to prepare them to be ready to take advantage of the education opportunities that are available. And I think that's, you know, I keep saying it, but, you know, it's one thing we know. We have all kinds of data to show that that matters. And let's measure it and see how that's impacting our equity conversation.
Very good.
I think you have to just yell, Alan.
Yes, sorry.
That's all right. Also on Goal Six, in terms of looking at the twenty-two-page document, will we be disaggregating the data also between gender as well as?
So, if I, yes. Actually, if you could go to the very last page of the document, we added a Measure 6.4A, where we are looking at the percentage of female students who are performing at a certain level on the EOGs, EOCs. And we also have, and I think that was a reading one, and then I think we have one for males as well. So, we have one for females and one for males. Now, we may do something different. We've actually not done anything like this before, so suggestions.
Further, would we be disaggregating not just gender overall, but for each subcategory? For example, African-American, would you have disaggregated male, female? For white students, disaggregated male, female? And I have one other comment, which I expect to get zero traction, but I'll feel good having said it one time. The Asian category drives me crazy. It's half the population of the world. In our district, we have Montagnards, who are very agricultural in their orientation. And we also have people from Japan and China who are extraordinarily focused on educational accomplishment. So, there's a huge range of, and it's probably true about every category, one way or another, but particularly in that category, there's a huge range of different students. None of our students are widgets, they're all different. And within that category, there's a huge range of students. And so, I'm not suggesting even that you necessarily would have something you could easily do with that, but I don't find that category to be as helpful as it might otherwise could be in some circumstances.
Dr. Petrie Martin?
Yes, sir.
I gather that you've worked with staff on filling in the blanks of the numbers and also changing some of the goal numbers. And since this is a board document, we need to approve it. At probably our next meeting.
Yes.
So, in the presentation next month, I'd like for you to point out to the whole board where there has been significant changes and additions. Because this document has been changed quite a lot since the original strategic plan and metrics.
Yes, sir.
So, and I get it that we need to look through it between now and then. But we need to sign off on it and make any changes that we're not comfortable with.
Certainly, I think we have a little bit more work to do as a staff in the building to make sure that the transition between Dr. Fabrizio and my office, that we didn't lose anything. So, we just want to make sure we look at it one more time.
And Deanna, Dr. Townsend-Smith, will be our representative in those, when you're meeting and collaborating.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, anything else to come up under the strategic plan? Well, we're wrapping up kind of early. Maria, do you have any closing remarks, or?
We actually do, and we're pulling up our next set of slides for you. We also have staff from NCVPS who will be joining us because, as I informed you a couple of times, we are going to be using technology to collect your responses from these two days. So, we have staff here who will be available to get you where you need to be and taking a look at some very critical questions that we have posed for you. So, we have five questions that hopefully we can get feedback after our two days together. The first is, what supports do low-performing districts need, based on some of the discussions that we've had yesterday? Not only the discussions with DPI staff, but also Dr. Gary Henry's presentation that he shared with us regarding some of the real critical barriers to low-performing schools progressing. The second question is in response to a lot of the information you heard from the three school districts who presented on their whole child initiatives. We know that we're looking for concrete recommendations to bring back to you as we head into the fall from the eleven pilots. And we would just like to hear from you, what are some things that have resonated with you from those pilot presentations that would be good recommendations? Third, we'd love to hear your thoughts about the NC check-in work. You saw a very enthusiastic group of educators today. And so, we certainly believe that NC check-ins has potential to be one of those evidence-based practices that we talked about yesterday for schools that might be struggling. This could be one of those tools that we could certainly support them in using. So, just thoughts about NC check-ins and its potential. The fourth question is, what recommendations do you have regarding school safety? Certainly, we heard an outstanding presentation regarding things that are already being proposed. So, you may tell us, yes, let's do more of what you're recommending. Or you might decide to tell us something totally different that we've not thought of, or states or schools that we need to take a look at. And then finally, of everything that you've heard, which is a lot over the last two days, how does this information you've learned influence state board metrics for our state board strategic plan? Some of that you've just shared with us, but if there are additional things that you want to provide, we would love to hear that as well. So, that really helps us summarize a lot of what we've talked about over the last two days. So, right now, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Colbert, and she is going to take us through the technology part of this. And she also has two capable staff members who will help in getting you set up on your technology.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. You can leave that up, that would be fine. So, we're going to use a tool called Padlet to collect your reflections and your...
So, we're going to use a tool called Padlet to collect your reflections and your action steps. Like any good work session, we want to have an idea about where, what you're thinking about where to go next. So, Padlet is a very common tool. A lot of the public schools of North Carolina use it. We use it at the North Carolina Virtual Public School. It is online sticky notes and my staff likes to tease me that I use sticky notes a lot despite the fact that we're virtual. So, I have an affinity with this Padlet tool. But this is a tiny URL and there are folks here. We have Brian Stevens, our Technology Director, and Mia Murphy, our Director of Outreach, and James Bell.
You said capable and we weren't sure if that was us or not.
Y'all met James last time.
We know James. We had the same reaction.
So, if you type this into any browser, and we'll leave it up there, thetinyurl.com, you will see a sticky note board and these folks can walk around and just help you if you need it. If you don't, ignore them.
Can I ask, can I ask a sort of a timing question? I got notes and notes and notes from each of these presentations that might generate some of my own thinking. How, how, how long can we keep this open so that, that we can do this?
Did you know I was getting ready to turn and ask for him?
Yes, we could keep it open for as, as long as you want to, at least a couple of weeks. Because at some point then we'll... Okay, we can keep it open through the weekend because at some point, we want to use the information. So, we want to stop the collection. Okay, and Dr. Townsend Smith will email the link to you. Now, in all transparency, this is not anonymous. I just wanted you to, I want you to know that upfront because if we have clarifying questions, we need to know who to ask and that's really the heart of the matter.
Could it be the browser?
Why yours isn't working individually, I'm not really sure. Hold on.
This will work on a iPad, a phone, a laptop, a desktop. This tool is very versatile.
Okay, but we can do this on our laptop at home?
Yes, ma'am. You can do it on your phone if you want it.
Even I have Safari on my phone.
Okay, how do you make the box go away?
Or tell it to do it?
But yeah, you can go to that tiny URL at home, you pull it up and you'll be able to do the same. It should work the same way. Hit the plus sign. It's going to give you a little box. The top of the box will say title. The bottom of the box is comments. You can do what you want with those two boxes.
I just need to make sure I capture that. I've got it here, but I'm not sure it's captured. I'll capture that.
It doesn't support it on my phone either. It doesn't support it on my phone either. Some have to write something doing it wrong.
It doesn't support unique technologies. You have two options.
So, we figured out if your Safari browser needs updating, it won't work. So, you can switch over to Chrome or you can take a few minutes to update Safari. But that's the good thing about technology. It's anytime, anyplace. We'll send it to you. Yes, and I think Ms. Willoughby figured out how to get it on her phone, right?
My phone browser wouldn't let me do it either. So, I'll just have to do it on my laptop at home. And thank you. Deanna just sent us... Deanna just sent us some email with that so we can click on it.
Okay, so I understand you all have received an email with the link, the tiny URL in it. And if you look up at the screen, this is what it looks like. It puts your responses in, in the columns.